According to Idaho Code Section 74-Bash 206-1B, the board may elect to hold an executive session to discuss B, to consider the evaluation of dismissal or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, individual agent or public school student.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Hillary?
Aye.
And JD?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Me? Aye. We are in executive session and will return at just a little bit.
To call this board meeting to order. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the very essence of God.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
I second that.
So we approve the agenda as is?
Correct.
Celebrations and all in favor, excuse me?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, celebrations and communications.
Chairperson Nixon, there was a point, there's just a communication in there that you have. That's it for today.
All right.
It's simple.
Okay. Do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
I would like to remove number eight, the lift station from the consent agenda.
Do I need a second for that?
I would second to remove the number eight lift station and approve the consent agenda as is for the removal.
Okay. Since that's different, do I have another second on that?
I second it.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
JD?
Hillary?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
All right.
So then do we need to discuss this?
I think so.
Okay. The reason I pulled it out is because there's just one bid and I'd like to have two.
No, trustee Lowe is 100% right. There was only one bid. This was a project that Kevin was trying to get done before he was finished. The second bid, second and hopefully third bid did not come in time. Our lift station, just to those of you that don't know, it takes our bathroom down the line to the main sewer. One pump is out. You've got quite a bit of rust and it was a project that we were waiting because we're probably going to have to shut down our bathroom while we do this, hopefully before it's shut down because we can't use it. The plumber that we got the bid from is the one we typically use, especially for emergencies. At this time, things are still working, but I can definitely come back with two bids that you would rather wait for July.
What if we, what if we make a motion, given you the leeway to move forward as long as you get another bid that's reasonable? Can we do that? I'm going to make a motion that allows you to move forward with this project as long as we get another bid that's within this amount or close to.
Could you say like within $1,000 or something like that?
I'm fine with that.
This is an estimate, so it's probably like a time and materials estimate, so it's probably not really even $15,000 of a bid. It's just their best.
They can't go over that.
Can't go over $15,000.
I just want to make that motion so that you guys have the leeway to move forward with it and have some autonomy to get it done.
I would second your motion.
Your motion is, do you want to state it?
I did.
Okay. Did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay, as long as she got it, I'm good. And you'll second that, Hillary?
Yes.
All right. And in favor?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
JD?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And I'm on. All right. All right. So consent agenda has been approved for the lookout. Do we have any delegations tonight? All right. At this time, we will see the delegations and hear from them. Just a few things I want to go over with the delegations. First, understand that we cannot make any comments or ask you any questions, that we are here to listen and we do want to take that opportunity to do that. So I just want you to realize that due to open meeting laws, there won't be any comments or questions asked, but we will be listening.
Or decisions.
Or decisions made.
Would you ask, no comments in the crowd?
Trustee Lowe would like to make sure that you guys are aware that this is an open agenda and that you need to hold your comments to yourself since there's so many people here. We'll start with Rick Moreno. Is he here? Hi, Rick.
Hello.
I have to say I know you.
I remember where to stand with so many people.
Right there. And let me just tell you, when you get to 30 seconds, our board secretary will let you know. So you kind of have that.
State your full name and address.
State your full name and address.
All right. My name is Rick Moreno. I live off of Hubbard Road, 855 West Hubbard. And I wanted to visit with you guys just real briefly. I have a packet for annexation in the city. And I was just getting, going over the packet that the guy said sent in and talked about a lot of the crunches that was going on in the school district and the approved developments up to this point. And I think I'm sort of caught in that whole mess of the larger developments compared to what I'm doing. My request is actually to create two lots for my sons to move and be closer to our family, though that started seven years ago. It's been a long process between the county and the city to figure out what to do with me. I had to create a street in order to get the lots created, to pay for the street to have the two lots for my kids. This isn't a retirement parachute or anything for me. But I know the city's crunch, clustering litigation for schools or money is for different things. And I guess I was just wanting to state that I do totally understand that that's a need for the protected taxpayers, you know, but I've also been a taxpayer for 27 years and, you know, get into that quote on my own. You know, my kids went K through 12. My wife worked for the school district 20 years and been paying taxes for the last 15 after they've been out. Plan on paying taxes, not going anywhere, we're not leaving. I'm not a typical developer who's coming in. Today, I might be considered a developer because I'm doing this annexation, but it's not the same form that's normal in what we've seen. So I guess my thought is that if I could, you know, we continue to support the community in a lot of different ways and if that could be changed or something added to where I'm willing and able to do some mitigation, just not at the dollars that can really help my influence to the impact for the schools, maybe his poor kids. But the packet doesn't really state anything. It's sort of almost like a form letter. So I'm just wondering if that can be revised at all or if that could be updated. That's it. Thank you much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moreno. And I have, I believe, sorry, is it Lori? Can I help you with this?
Weatherby.
Mrs. Weatherby. I tell you. I didn't even see that. I am so sorry. Thank you.
She has good handwriting.
Yeah, and I was a teacher for years. Usually I can read it, but I wondered that I was like, would you please state your name and your address?
Yeah, my name is Lori Weatherby and my address is 6010 East Crosswood Lane. Fellow community members, teachers, colleagues, trustees, I was hoping to speak to you guys after we discussed the budget, but I'm just here in hopes that you guys really consider the impact on what you're doing. I think all of us in here, we're here because we love kids and we want what's best for kids. I know the decisions you are going to make are going to be tough, but us as teachers, we're not the enemy and I know that you're not the enemy. And I guess what I'm hoping is, is when you make those decisions, you're making decisions not only for the kids but for employees who give everything they got. Some of you are new. I saw you at graduation and I have to admit, I was a little sad that you didn't take an opportunity to get to know us and even approach us. And I think there's a misconception that there's a division. And I hope the binding line is that we want what's best for kids here. And it makes me sad. I'm hoping the decision's a good one. This would be my 30th year if I decide to say and teach. 24 of them have been lovely years at Kuna, but times have changed. And I think the misconception that we see on TV is not what is really going on in the schools. And I would challenge you guys to go and meet and talk with us, not just go based off what you're hearing from the community on hearsay from what kids. We love your kids, but they're also kids. And I think we can take a look at how we thought as young 14, 15, 16, 17-year-old students and what the media is what the media is portraying. Come in my classroom, I would love to have you. My door's always open, just like my arms are always open for your kids. So, um, whatever your decision is, it's gonna make an impact. Um, I hope it's not in a negative way, but really take a look at how it's not gonna only impact children, but amazing people who spend a lot of time from maintenance, from individuals who, um, just pour everything they've got to make this thing work and, um, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Thank you. I will probably slaughter this name too. Suzanne Rong? Did I do okay?
You're good.
I did.
It's Rong by your impression.
Sorry.
If it helps, the original was wrong.
Okay, well, there you go, thank you. Um, go ahead and state your name and address.
Suzanne Rong, eleven oh three North Cambrick Drive, here in Kuna. Uh, good evening. Uh, so I have six kids, uh, two of them have already graduated. Uh, my youngest is set to attend third grade over at Hubbard and a fifth grader that's gonna start over at Ross.
It's hard to say.
I just wanna start off tonight by saying thank you to all you board members, um, for taking time out of your day, out of your families. As a former board member, I know, I know what it takes, so, so thank you. Tonight, I came with a lot of plans and ideas, um, for Hubbard, um, and not having to close Hubbard, but to close the annex, um, and just kinda shift, um, kids over differently into Hubbard, um, instead of impacting Hubbard and Indian Creek and, um, and Ross. Crunching numbers from what we had during our bond and what the capacity was and putting kids over there, it would just, I think it would just really take away from our, our kids, um, and their learning and our amazing teachers over at Hubbard. So, but I, I did see another option that hopefully does get discussed tonight because I thank you for taking the consideration with all the emails and discussions that have come in from, um, families. I also wanted to state that I hope that what has happened over the last week, that not just as like a board, not just as a district, but as a community, that we can push when these bonds comes, when these levies come. I know I can only do as much as I can, um, but now it's gotten to this point because we wanna keep saying no, 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 and now it's affecting our kids. So, I think the next one, we really have to find a way to really reach the whole community. So, um, my last thing is that, um, I hope that, um, now that we have most of a new board, that when we have these emergency things come up with the buildings, that we do them one by one instead of them all now hitting us all at once. And now, we're just stuck in this situation, so, that is all. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, this one I've got, Laura Anderson. Thank you. Please state your name and your address.
I'm Laura Anderson, I live at twenty-five hundred East Rock Falls Lane in Kuna. And today, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the budget in regards to the ag department at the high school. Um, I wanna start by expressing my appreciation to the board and administration for being very mindful as you plan the budget for the coming year, very difficult decisions are having to be made and as a community member and a parent, I thank you for taking that responsibility very seriously. I appreciate the back and forth discussion I observed during your special meeting and although it's uncomfortable to not agree, as an observer, I prefer to see that process at work and know that coming to a meeting of the minds isn't always pretty. Thank you for taking the time to meet and discuss and I think the results you come to will be better for everyone, especially our students, which is what we're all here for. For those community member, for those board members that may be less familiar with the ag department at Kuna High, I want to speak today on behalf of those teachers that work within that department. I believe there's currently four that teach all of the ag classes. And in case you don't know, the ag classes are incredibly valuable and offer real-world learning and opportunities for our students, which is especially important because we reside in an agricultural community. Additionally, although in the last few decades, the essential nature of agriculture in our society has been undervalued, that is now changing. It's becoming increasingly apparent that the pendulum is swinging back to emphasize the importance of trade careers, including agriculture. Agriculture does not just mean farming crops and raising animals. This is reflected in the broad range of classes that are offered at Kuna High. The classes taught include Intro to Ag, Zoology, Animal Science, Ag Mechanics and Welding, Livestock Management, Equine, Landscape Design, Botany, Greenhouse Management, Forestry and Wildlife Management, Ag Economics, Ag Business, Floral Design, Plant and Soil Horticulture and more. In addition, these instructors also spend countless hours teaching and practicing with the many students that belong to the FFA program. After school, they spend many hours and weekends preparing for local, district, state and national competitions. And this experience results in amazing personal growth for the students, as well as leadership opportunities and the earning of substantial scholarships. If you've ever attended one of the fundraising events or other things put on by the FFA program, you'll see how much our community loves and supports these students and these experiences. As parents, community members, we stand behind our ag teachers, our students that participate in ag classes and the FFA organization and as that you as board members will do the same. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we have one more that has signed up, Elliot Tolbert.
Yes.
All right, if you'll state your name and your address.
Elliot Tolbert, two seven seven eight West Midnight, here in Kuna. Thank you for the time to address you guys. I actually related, but I cannot follow up all of the wonderfully prepared speeches that were just given. But, uh, I wanted to kind of address actually the superintendent search. The last meeting, you guys came in, we had, you know, there was a slideshow and we were gonna discuss, you know, we, you all, we're going to discuss, you know, what are our options? Uh, and that discussion very quickly went, oh, we have three bids for this or four bids. Um, the, the levy not passing now, looking at the bids, we're looking anywhere from fifteen to thirty thousand dollars, that's classified staff salary, that's a half of a counselor, that's money that can be reallocated in the budget. And so, I just wanted to come in and really kind of implore the board to take a look at maybe redirecting how we search for the superintendent rather than outsourcing it to, uh, I think out of all the bids, every one of those companies was from the Midwest, nobody was even in the States without, except for ISBA. But, we got lucky with Wendy being an in-house body that would just kind of promote into the role, even if we just use in-house assets and try to save that money and let's put it back to the kids or put it back to facilities where it should be. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chairperson, should be someone, Mandy Barnes on that list?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, there he is and I apologize. Mandy Barnes? Sorry, Mandy.
That's okay, it's like I swear I wrote my name down.
Yeah, you did, it's just, I get a little nervous, can I say that as chairman?
Oh, you're nervous, okay.
Yeah, it's all good, it's all good.
All right.
So, go ahead and state your name.
My name is Mandy Barnes, nine thirty South Pinmark Avenue. Um, today, I was going to come up here and speak regarding the, um, issue with Hubbard closing, I'm a Hubbard mom, um, so I had a speech ready and I was gonna come up here and then, as Suzanne said, there were slides that were also sent out that there's discussion of an alternate solution. So, thank you so much for putting that, um, alternate solution out there, but I still do want to, um, speak about the budget and the position cuts that have been presented. Let's please remember that the school board is in business of student success, not making money or cutting, cutting budgets. Let's also remember that the product is our children and should be at the forefront before making decisions that will directly impact students and families. Per John Hattie's research, one of the highest indicators of student achievement is teacher credibility in the eyes of the student. I pulled a quote from his research that states, "If a teacher is not perceived as credible, the students just turn off. If a student doesn't get that value of education by the age of eight, they are behind for the most of the rest of their school life. Students are very perceptive about knowing which teachers can make a difference to their learning and teachers who command this credibility are most likely to make the difference," end quote. Our students' school years, especially these younger years, are crucial for the development of skills critical for future success. We are fortunate to have a school like Hubbard as it allows for staff to build solid relationships with students in a supported and caring environment and command that credibility. Although research indicates that student class size does not directly impact student achievement, there is indication that added classroom support, intervention specialists, aides and effective classroom management strategies do have impact on student achievement. These are the positions that are proposed to be cut. As decisions are made on budget and position cuts, it is imperative that we maintain quality teachers in our district. Please don't leave. I want to ensure that student and school success programs, opportunities for teacher growth and professional development, behavior management techniques, et cetera, are also spared and supported. This is imperative to our children's current and future success. Thank you.
Thank you. I now believe that is all on the delegation, so thank you very much for, uh, taking time to talk to us. All right, so now we're on finished business discussion and action items and we need an update on the capital plan test.
Uh, so, uh, Chairperson, please step forward, say it, Chairperson.
Yeah, you can say whatever you like.
This is just a really a short update because we really don't have it moved forward too much on this because we've been kinda knee deep in, um, some of other things right now. But moving forward, what we wanna do is we'll send out a survey, we already have a couple of names of people interested, but we'll send out a survey, get some interest and then the goal will be to probably once school starts or work in August to, to get that, that, um, committee working. So, I will be working on that this summer, getting the names, getting the information out and then setting up the, the first meeting, but I think it probably won't happen till school starts in August because I don't, July is so hard to get people together.
No, I...
If you're okay with that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
There's one suggestion that I came up with, I was thinking, um, and we talked about different people on that committee.
Yes.
I would like to see some students also.
Sure.
Because it is about them and I don't think I made that clear to you along with, um, what we talked about.
No, I, I think, I do, yeah, no, this, but, but thank you for reminding me of that, but I know we do have a couple of people already that are interested in, you know, our parents and...
Parents, business.
Steve LaBerge talked to me too, so maybe if she might, we can be together and discuss.
Yes, because I know you two are the, yeah, so I will, it just, we're, that's where we are right now.
Yeah. It just, I feel I need to take the backseat right now for what we're doing and what we're doing right now.
But we'll, we'll have some time and...
I appreciate you saying that, but...
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna consider two, we're gonna consider the superintendent's search packets that I have these, I believe, that came and, uh, take a look at those. I don't, I guess I don't be making the action item. There were, I believe, four, five. So, um, go ahead and open up for discussion.
Well, um, I think there were, do you wanna talk about the information that you had with ISBA's amount if they were gonna charge us?
You can, um, I, however you wanna do it, Hillary.
Okay, um, the bid for ISBA was eighty-seven hundred dollars of because we're members, then they give us two thousand dollars of a discount or back or?
Two thousand, uh, it, I, I think it might be back, I think it's through, uh, from when I understood a grant that comes back, so that would make it sixty-eight hundred for full. There also, I believe, is a forty-eight hundred and they'll just do the beginning part. And with that one, when I talked to them, it was a four hundred dollar reimbursement. I guess I'll go through what I, I thought. I did number one, uh, and I can't remember who they are, Ray and Associates, and I thought the thirty thousand was way too much and they had no Idaho experience. So, I didn't, I didn't care for that one. Number two, I liked their timeline, but it was too early. I think that we should be looking at January and February of hiring and not December because a lot of superintendents haven't made up their minds to look at things.
And which one's number two?
Number two is McPherson and Jacobson.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just going down the line there. And thank you for asking.
What was their cost?
Their cost was fourteen thousand five hundred, but they did have a person on there who had most of her education here in Idaho that would be helpful. I did like that.
Is that Andy Grover?
No.
No.
That was number four.
Okay.
All right. Number three was ISBA. I liked the price. I liked what they had set up to do and I liked the fact that all of their business has been here in Idaho and that there was only one person that got out once they started and that was because they decided to hire in-house. And so, I thought their, um, I don't wanna say, their success rate was good. So, that meant something to me. Number four was H Y A, I believe, and they wanted seventeen thousand eight hundred. But they had two Idaho schools that they have looked at, Driggs and Lake Pondure, and I should say Driggs is Teton, it's a smaller one. Andy Grover's on that one and they wanted seventeen thousand eight hundred. Number five, again, I like the timeline and their price was twenty-three thousand eight hundred. So, those are kinda some of my thoughts as I went through all of those today. Or yesterday, or when I looked at it.
I thought that Andy Grover was on the Jake, the McPherson-Jacobson.
Yeah, they got, he was, he was got flipped.
Oh, they got flipped, sorry. Because I thought I'd done that. It may have been, it may have been when I looked at it. Yes, then, if that's the one, I looked at his. And even though he was a little bit more than the fourteen thousand five hundred, I liked the Idaho connection.
I do, I do wanna be on record just saying that, um, just saying we don't have a budget for this and with our budget cuts right now, this probably isn't something we should be doing, but I just wanna be on record saying that.
And I, um, I feel like you too a little bit, J D. I feel like, um, this is a hard thing for us to do right now and I wanna do it right and when we're sitting here talking about budget cuts and people, um, it's hard for me. And tonight's gonna be a hard night, but I, I do agree with you and I want that to be noted.
J G Consulting was thirty grand.
Yes.
Yeah.
Was that the one that I said was number one? Sorry, when I looked at these, I did number one, two, three, four and five, I didn't put the names down.
Okay.
So, it may have been looking different now than when I looked at it.
Well, that one was a no for me. That one wasn't a no for me because I don't wanna pick that one.
No, and I, I did like the fact there's no Idaho experience. And as, uh, has been pointed out, a lot of these come from the Midwest and have, um, worked there.
And I guess just as a review, we opened this up for anyone that wanted to submit, no matter where they were from, as part of the process.
Correct.
We didn't seek all of these people out, just... So, everyone was clear.
Um, I mean, I like the price of ISBA for sure. I don't, uh, it probably wouldn't be my first pick, it'd probably be my second pick. I, I like McPherson and Jacobson, the way it was presented and I like the local connection, the somewhat local connection and, um, but it is more money, so, I guess...
And that's with Andy Grover.
It is, yes, and, and I don't know him, I just know that he was the superintendent of Melville, that's all I know.
Yeah.
I'm on him.
I think he's the head of the superintendents, help me out, he is Idaho.
I guess, what is this?
A S A.
Yeah, A S A, yeah. A S A, I, I, I think, yeah, he does do that too.
I, I, I A S A. I A S A.
So, I guess I agree with Hillary, I like ISBA and McPherson and Jacobson. So, I don't, if, I can, if no one else has anything, I can make a motion, but did you have something?
No, I like those two.
Okay.
So, uh, would someone like to make the motion?
I make a motion that we go out to bid or that we use ISBA to do a superintendent search.
So, I think on the agenda for the action item, it's been narrow, it's two in here, two presentations.
And, and, and I just wanna say, because we're doing this, it's just one step in many steps and that, um... and that we understand, as JD has said, that this costs money, and I'm not sure it's money we have, but I do feel that we need to go forward. So I just want that to be said, and your motion is?
My motion would be to use, to hear presentations and narrow the search of superintendent firms to McPherson and Jacobson and ISBA.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
JD?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Okay, so we'd like to hear from those two for their next voting. All right, next thing is the second reading of policies. Mr. Graves, you're up.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
There's not much room back there. It makes me want to go ahead and dive.
This is everybody's favorite part of our board meetings. And these are, these are second reads, and this were just the changes that were recommended or requested by you guys. I will go as fast or as slow as you guys would like. Policy five nineteen, remember the definitions is what the request was, and to remove as perceived by some.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the second reading of policy five nineteen.
Go second.
I second.
Any discussion? All right, Hillary?
Aye.
JD?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Aye.
Aye for me. Okay, next one, policy five seventy.
Yeah, second one is a statement in five seventy in regards to extracurricular-coach or student activities. Scroll down to the fees for extracurricular activities. This sentence, student athletes may be withheld from games, practices, events, meets and matches until fees are paid. Stress was may, sometimes students, parents get in a situation where maybe there's a payment plan, so it didn't say will, but otherwise, that just gave them, we're asking for fees, and if fees aren't paid, there's that statement in there.
It does outline the fees specifically, right? So do we want to, please hold on this, because we'll be discussing some of that in our budget talks, and like, maybe wait to, or, I mean, because it's one of, I thought it was one of the items we would be talking about.
And remember, this is second read, we could have a third read, we can do corrections or additions for the third read as well.
I think that, are those blank to be filled in, correct?
No, they're the current fees.
It's a hundred for high school and seventy for middle school.
Okay.
If we can fix that on the third reading, I make a motion that we approve this policy.
Okay, and I-
Five seventy.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I, discussion, I just want to make sure that people know, as parents, that it is a participation fee and not if your child-
It's pay to play.
Yeah, it's not a pay to play, that it's participation. I just want to make sure that that's noted, because I know there are people who they pay that money, and then their son doesn't play, and they get a little upset. So I just want to make sure that that's noted. Okay, all in favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael? JD?
Aye.
And me, aye.
The third one is the policy six ten, it was a correction, we had, in words, it said forty-six, and in numbers, it said forty-eight, so now they match, forty-eight, forty-eight.
Can I just say thank you?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to accept policy number six ten for the second read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
JD?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And aye for me.
And the last one is policy seven thirty. The rules for electronics were in procedure, and you all asked they be put into the policy. So we did that, however, the students with fragrance spraying like a long mist didn't really match the electric devices, so that it just dropped down and it was fine as well.
Sounds like a good policy.
I said you can't wear it, we're just saying don't.
Don't spray it while you're there.
While you're on the bus.
It could affect kids with allergies, so.
Or a driver.
Or the driver, that's true. I appreciate you detailing that out. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept policy seven thirty for the second reading.
And do I have a second?
I have a second.
And any discussion? Hillary?
Aye.
JD?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Aye.
And I, aye. All right, and now for the two thousand and four levy election results, which make me sad, but I appreciate that we're going to be saying what the math was, and so that would be our work.
I was going to say, oh, you can click into them to see what the yes, no votes were. I just need an action item saying, or a motion, that we will accept the results as-
And what was the final when you combined Ada Canyon? Is that there that I'm not seeing?
In these, they're just, let's do separately, not-
It's not combined, so, okay, so that's just what you're doing. So wasn't it like a fifty-six percent? I just want to make sure that it was, seventy was Canyon, and then when it came out, it was fifty-six. I just want to make sure that the-
Fifty-six to forty-four?
Fifty-seven.
Yeah, fifty-six to forty-four. I just want to make sure that our community knows.
That was just Ada Canyon, Canyon is fifty-six?
No, it was combined.
That was the combined?
Yeah, I think it was fifty-three, I want to say, per Ada. But when it comes out, there were only like a hundred people in Canyon, so when you take that percentage, it comes out to that. But I just want to make sure that people understand that the levy is a little closer than what we thought. And so, yeah, and that is why we're here today, and that is why we are ready to, I guess we're not ready for that yet, let's do the school year.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, sorry. Do I have a motion to accept the levy election results?
I make a motion to accept the levy election results.
And a second.
I have a second.
And all in favor, Hillary?
Aye.
JD?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And Kirsty?
Aye.
And aye for me. Now we'll move along with our school year negotiated agreement, and that is Director Graves and Trustee Board, Arcade Co-Presidents Melissa Nielsen and Kristi Meyer. Yeah, it is a full house. Surprise!
Chairman and board members, we are presenting our negotiated agreement that we worked through. We use our, sorry, we use our interest-based bargaining process where Mr. Thornton is on the board with us as, or on the negotiation team, as well as some of our district leaders, and we have representatives, like, where did you go? It's so much that in graders like that just disappear. Then we have representative, representative for the secondary, for the elementary, and for the middle school. And then because Kristi and I are co-presidents, we have both elected to be on the negotiations. That way, we're both in the know and not having to relay the information. This is our interest-based process, we'll talk more about that in a second, but these are our timelines, it was presented to the membership on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, it was ratified with three noes and the rest were yeses, so, and we're presenting it to you now. In our, we have a great insurance broker and committee that work through our insurance costs, adjustments, the different benefits that we have. We were a healthy school district this year, and so our insurance rates did not go up. There are some, and these are hyperlinks, you can go in and look at the insurance presentation as well as the master contract. We had some contract language that we needed to clarify. The first one is the contract will include an agreement between the Kuna School District and the Kuna Education Association to continue the interest-based bargaining process for negotiations. There is a change to the bereavement language to update, that is updated to reflect your newly approved board policy. There is a change to, for our certified staff that are, this is long, sorry, that are required to take CEUs, which are the continuing education units, to renew their occupational licensures such as nurses, speech pathologists, several of our CTE teachers. We are solidifying a standardized ratio to convert to the pay scale payment, so this removes any of the ambiguity that we've had about credit conversion and placement. We are adding to the fall review language that allows the Kuna Education Association and the Kuna School District to reopen negotiations in the event that the district receives unanticipated funds or staffing units are greater than currently negotiated. Big help then. Salary schedule. So just a little history for our new board members. Previous to two thousand seventeen, we had a salary schedule. In two thousand seventeen, a new one was created, but the other one was opted to be retained for employees that had been hired prior to two thousand seventeen. This, while it was a great idea between our furloughs and our different adjustments that had to be made to the salary schedule, we ended up with two salary schedules that were highly confusing and had a lot of errors in them. So since two thousand seventeen, we've been trying to fix some of those errors. We've tried to fix them with changing ratios, with percentages, that sort of thing, but our interest has been to have one salary schedule with the ability for certified staff to move quickly through the, through the schedule with education and longevity for the highest benefit, thank you. We also wanted to avoid the confusion when we were recruiting, some people were looking at one pay scale, thinking they were going to get paid that, as opposed to they were hired after two thousand seventeen, and they were on a different line. Our state funds master's degrees differently than bachelor's degrees, and so we're trying to encourage teachers to get their master's degrees, so increases our funding. And we'd like to reward employees for hanging out in Kuna and give them incentives for their education. So because of the money that the governor promised teachers last year, we were able to make iteration one. So when we first proposed fixing this and putting it into one salary schedule, Elmera said no to my five million dollar adjustments. So knowing that we were going to need to do these in steps, our first iteration was last year, we merged the two salary schedules into one. Every individual salary was analyzed in detail and ensured that it was accurate on a new schedule, and with the governor's promised money, if it was less than three, if their increase or movement, well, it wasn't really an increase, but if their movement was less than three thousand five hundred fifty, they were compensated with an additional amount from the district. So now we are iteration two for twenty-four, twenty-five. So the governor's promised money is now embedded into the salary schedule, so we don't have to make any supplemental payments, there aren't any supplemental contracts that need to be made in order to adjust the salary on this schedule. It adjusts steps and lanes so that the increases are reliable and consistent throughout the salary schedule, and Mr. Thornton can speak to this, when we were looking at our different, the original salary schedules, and even last year with the adjustment to one, there were some areas where you moved from one year to another, and you got a hundred dollars for stepping down a year. There were other areas where maybe you got five thousand dollars for stepping down, but there was no rhyme or reason to why it was such a difference. So we have tried to make it so that the steps make sense and the lanes make sense. So again, thanks, Elmera, she's done so much work for us with this salary schedule. Every individual salary was analyzed to ensure it was accurate on the new schedule. So she took every person and placed them where they would be. So this is our adjusted, the iteration two, the final adjusted salary schedule.
I'm just going to make a statement. I really appreciate, after three years, that fourth year of staying in the Kuna School District, you make a larger jump, and I appreciate also what you're bottoming out at, that that was very competitive to those schools around us.
It is very competitive. The year four is actually the governor.
Oh, is that the governor's?
It's mandated, yeah.
Well, I'm just thinking, thank you, because as a teacher, it sounds like we're rewarding those who stay, and I thought, that's nice, that's a nice-
And that is, when we looked at other salary schedules from the state, but also other states, that seems to be the trend, is that we want to keep our teachers, once we've trained them a little bit for a few years, we'd want to keep them, and so most school districts have that, have a jump, or in the year three to five.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I thought that was good.
No, thank you.
And the salary schedule is very nice now because next year, we could just add the cost of living to it instead of this huge change again, and so teachers know basically what they'll make with more education, it's consistent for everybody.
So we're hopeful that everyone will have an increase in pay this year, but it is not a raise. We're not asking for a percentage of increase in our salary, we are asking to fix the salary schedule with this final iteration. However, that only, that leaves our last, rewarding employees with longevity bonuses and education incentives. Next year, we would like to propose some sort of system where our teachers that hit this fifteen years, when they're sixteen years, they're still here at fifteen years. We would like to propose, and we'll obviously negotiate this, some sort of, like, if you've been here for sixteen to twenty years, an additional amount to reward our teachers that are sticking around for thirty years, is that? Way to go. All right, so that kind of falls into our continuing task force. While we worked very hard this year with a lot of negotiations, because we collaborate with the interest-based bargaining process from September, and then we do our formal negotiations starting in March, we are able to really look at it, our district, and look at throughout the year what teachers need, issues that are arising that come up, and so we try and fix everything, because that's who we are, teachers, but that's not always possible. So some of the things that have still been on our radar, or that were added to our radar this year, are compensating our certified staff that are required to be at an event that are not being compensated for being at that event. Longevity and education incentives, we are needing more behavioral supports, whether it's training for teachers or staff, like to keep working on that. Our class sizes and caseloads are recommended, which is pretty standard in the state, but we'd like them to be required. Working with administrators to the secondary and elementary schedule, making sure that our elementary students are being taken care of, but also that our secondary students are getting the hours and that the schedule best meets their needs. And then continuing work with our administrators, evaluating with them, and the district office. So our hope is that it will be, that you will have your motion, and that we can send out our contracts soon because we need to get them back.
Thank you for presenting. General motion to consider the negotiated agreement.
I so move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion or comments? All right, Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
JD?
Aye.
And Hillary?
Aye.
And me, aye. All right, and now for the main event, considering the twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Chair Nixon, trustees, when it comes to budget, they're good years and they're challenging years. So the last two years, they were good years because we still had a luxury of soft funds, such as supplemental levy and also Essar funds, just to remind you, that's the pandemic relief funds that are unfortunately expiring today. So also, they're known as soft funds. So unfortunately, this year, not just for us, for many school districts, this year got a very bad nickname, a funding cliff year. That means for many, many districts, the additional sources of revenue- That means for many, many districts, the additional sources of revenue are no longer available. For us, it's two sources of revenue, supplemental levy and soft federal funds. So it's not a surprise, we have been preparing for this, but it doesn't matter. You can prepare for it way ahead of time. It really hurts when it happens. So today is going to be, we're going to make difficult decisions and there's going to be conversations. So just because this is a budget hearing, I will still have to present you with the information, and then I'll pause and leave some time for your conversations and considerations so you can make a final decision. And just because, unlike other districts, we are one of the few districts that have a luxury to split the pain over two years, right? We're not going a full $5 million reduction in one year. So we're giving ourselves a time. So this year, we're only going with a halfway, 2.5 million dollar reduction. And even with that, it always tends, with all the conversations that we have, we always tend to talk about two years, right? We were talking about current and we're starting, and then we're worrying about the future. So I would like to kind of maybe navigate the conversation with the slides. In the beginning of the presentation, I will focus on the present. And when I say present, I mean, I mean the school year that's about to start in a few, in a month, in July, the fiscal year. So the decision that we're going to make today, it's going to affect the current school year, that's the 2425 upcoming school year. And the motion that you're going to make, it's going to affect this school year. We will still leave some time to talk about the future, the things that, the homework for us to do and some research. But today's budget hearing is about the 202425 school year. And usually, I talk about general funds only, but we've been talking about it since April. And it, you know, it's an ongoing, a kind of work in progress. We make decisions and we go through several iterations. And there's some things that have changed since May, so that's why I will talk not only about general fund, I will talk about the change of plans in our debt service fund, in our school facility fund, and in our general fund. And so I will talk about one fund at a time, and I promise I'll leave some time for conversations, because I'm sure you have lots of questions. So now, not talking about any cuts, not yet, not talking about general fund. Just let's talk about debt service fund and the facility fund. So this is the bucket of money that Michael Keith was talking about last Monday. So just a reminder, hopefully this stuff looks familiar to you. So the new House Bill 521, that was recently approved by the legislation, is going to bring two different buckets of money, if you will always say buckets of money, two different sources of revenue for Kuna School District. And so right now, I will talk about one of them, known as School District Facility Fund. It has its own Idaho code. And initially, this fund has a nickname of the waterfall terms, right? Because, and that's not new money, you know, that's the kind of, an ongoing annual distribution, but it comes with terms and conditions. It comes from the state and our, like, the expected amount is $2.1 million, and it comes with terms and conditions, and they're known as waterfall. They're like, first you do this, if you don't have to do this, then you can do this. If you don't have to do this, you can do this, but you have to follow first come, first served terms. That's why it's called waterfall. So the initial plan that we had, and that's what we did last year, right? You know, and these are the waterfall terms that I was talking about. You know, you have to reduce the bond levy first, the supplemental levy, the facility levy, and then you go to the option D, which is more flexible. Last year, you know, we still, we still have our, have our existing debt, annual interest and principal payments that we have to make for our existing bond. And the state says, you know why? We will help you only with the portion, and you go and ask for a difference from the community. This is how the tax rate is changed back and forth, and only ask for a difference. So use this money to pay off the bond levy first. So the change of plans is, and not the change of plans, the initial plan, we do have our restricted fund, the debt retirement fund, has some funds that could be used only to make interest and principal payments or pay off some debt ahead of time, like making an extra principal payment, to save on maintenance. And that's our plan, and we're going to do the deficents in August. So this slide is going to show what has changed since May, and this is what we're going to do, and this is what I'm going to put in the budget financial statements and send to the state. The change of plans, Michael Keith, our financial advisor, came up with a really good idea and explained to us that right now, we are in a situation where we could change our plan and use these funds for facility and maintenance, and this is how. The money that we have collected to use for the deficents, we're not going to do the deficents. We're going to use this money to make our interest, annual interest and principal payment. It's almost like making our mortgage payments. So if we're going to use the cash balance to make annual payments, then there is no need to go to the community for one year and ask for any money. That means there is no need to levy anything for one more year, for one year. What that means for the community, the tax rate is going to be nearly zero. So what that means for us, the state will still give us these funds, and they will say, okay, follow the waterfall. If you don't have any levy, if you don't have any supplemental levy, if you don't have any facility levy, you, you fall under the section D, which we could use it for maintenance, or reserve it for future debt payments, either or, it's not and. And of course, it is all new to us, right? And we just want to make sure we are not breaking any rules, we want to make sure we don't have to pay back, and we want to make sure we're in compliance with Idaho code. So I took the snapshot, this is the snapshot from Idaho code, and this is the section D, says exactly what that slide says. So we, none of those categories apply to us, so we could use the funds for the facility and maintenance. And we do not have to return it back. But Idaho code, you know, we all interpret it differently, so it felt better to reach out to the state and get a response from them as well. And this is the link to the recently asked questions, because we're not the only districts that are going to do this here. And they confirmed that we do not have to return it as long as we use it for allowable expenses. And the key word here is what we call waterfall, they call it order of uses. The key is, the order of uses applies at the time the funds are received. So in 202425, we're not going to have any levies. If anything happens in November, that's effective the 2526 school year. So I feel very comfortable with Idaho code and the confirmation from the state and the recommendation to be, the recommendation would be to take Michael's Keith's advice and follow with a new plan, so we could have access to the facility funds.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Or just interject, just so the public knows, and there's why we're able to do this, is because our levy didn't pass?
Because our levy didn't pass.
And the question is, just to make sure, we can actually, we could use this money for salaries of maintenance employees?
This, yes. So, so the question is, could we, we could use these funds, because Idaho code says routine maintenance, so that, that means we could use it to pay salaries for the maintenance crew. Unfortunately, this fund is more restrictive, because they removed the word routine and it's modernization only. So yes, we could, just a reminder, you know, one-time opportunity, but yes.
And then the other question is, if we did run a levy in November and it passed that levy, we would probably decrease the money by this amount?
By this amount, yes.
Okay.
And I also want to say that this is one-time money, and it's because of what we have saved in the past by paying our deficents and paying our bonds to them.
Correct, this is a one-time opportunity.
And so that the community knows, this, anything we put over there at the end of one year is.
Correct. This is a one-time opportunity, because we only have enough to make payments for 12 months. In the year 202526, I will have to levy this amount, and then we will go back to the way we were. And the tax rate will go back to probably a half of what it is right now.
Or it can be used for repairs, to fix things, right?
Yes, the 2.1.
Yes, 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 yes.
But it's only a one-time?
Correct, one-time opportunities, yeah. It's confusing, that's why, you know, on Monday, I spent all this time researching and then reaching out to other districts, and I'm like, I just needed it right. So it's just taking advantage of an unfortunate situation, the supplemental levy didn't pass, but at least we could use some facility funds, you know, for critical maintenance. Now, this is exact, it's just like a summary of what I just said, kind of a summarizing, so what that means for taxpayers, they will be surprised, the tax rate is going to be nearly zero for one year.
And then it will go back up?
And it will go back up, yes.
To about 54, 52 cents per hundred thousand?
Depending on the decisions made.
And depending on the decisions we make in the levy, if we pass another levy or whatever.
But probably not even above 2%.
No, I think we've done very well, and we're very mindful about some of this, to be able to use this money.
Good question.
Now, another question that I got, oh, sorry, go ahead. So it's the timing, right? So some other concerns that I, so now let's summarize, right? We have one bucket of money that the expectations will come from in August, that's already confirmed by the state, and then we have another bucket of money. The state, the state said, you can get excited, yes, it's approximately $20 million, could be more, but don't get too excited, because it's going to take some time, you know? We will try to give you a little bit of it, but we've got some work to do. Do not expect more than that, you know, the rest will come sometime in the calendar year 202526, but it will come. It's just a matter of time. And the August is the earliest, and then I got questions, well, how can you start fixing things now if you don't have access to the funds? But this is the way we function, the state only gives us distributions twice a year. We have to figure out our cash flow in between, and that's what we do. That's why it's very important to have a good fund balance and a cash flow. And even without touching the fund balance, fund balance, even if our contractors start any work right now, by the time they're done, we only pay after services are provided. We only pay 30 days, most likely, after the services are provided. So by the time we actually pay our first bill, it's probably going to be sometime in August, so we will already have access to those funds.
So let me make sure I understand this. So the, what we would do is go ahead with some of our maintenance that needs to be done?
Some critical maintenance.
Critical maintenance, of that 2.1 that Michael Keith gave us? So we could have air conditioning at the high school?
Depending on the, on the, on the priority, yes.
Just saying, yes, okay. I just want to make sure that I understand that, okay?
We can start the work now. So with that said, the next slide is going to be about Hubbard, and, you know, I would like Director Graves to add in some information, but as probably already, hopefully everybody heard by now, there's some change of plans. The change of plans is not to close the whole school, is to close the annex building only, and it's going to be very cozy in there, because the main building is going to be full, but the students wouldn't have to, you know, transition to different schools along with teachers. Unfortunately, we will have to work through the Head Start program and find them another home. And with that said, if you have any questions, you know, Kim Bakarow and Director Graves are here to answer all the questions that you may have.
The only question I had, and I think you've already answered it, is the Lego bill, our Lego rooms will be saved. And the other question is to make sure that there's enough room. And will you have a Title I room, or what's going on with that one? And I just wanted to hear that.
Well, I.
The Lego lab could also, you know, like, what's not being?
Or the library, maybe, or something?
Absolutely, and similar to what Reed does in some of our full buildings. Yes, you have small groups in the hallway, you can find every, every space.
I just wanted to make sure that those were being taken care of.
My, my question is, is if we accept House Bill 292, do we still have to do this? Do we still have to close annex?
Yes, because we have to get the roof fixed.
Okay, so it's a time, it's a timing issue, though?
Also, I want it's unsafe to have kids on that.
But we'll have the money to fix annex, and as soon as it's done, we can come back.
We could. I think the priority would be, like, what are you going to prioritize first? Is it going to be the high school HVAC and then Reed's roof also? And so four schools that have fire panels, so.
That was my question about Hubbard, is that we also need fire panels, and so that kind of is a priority if we're going to be using that?
Well, it's for all kids.
Yeah, it's, they need Creek, it's Ross, it's Hubbard, and they need high school all need fire panel and fire safety.
Is this part of a future slide, the critical maintenance, or is that going to be on another meeting agenda, like, to kind of decide which things are prioritized?
Well, I think you're going to get bids that you couldn't get done in time, so that would be next month.
Next month, yes.
So we're not going to be making a decision on what is done today?
Correct.
Because we need bids.
And then not to mention, like, because this money has a little bit more wiggle room than the other pot of money that we're going to get once school starts, so we want to be careful with that, so that we can use it a little different if we have to.
Do, and I'm trying to remember, was it 2.3 million that we needed to fix just those things?
The critical needs?
Yes.
4.5, remember it was two?
Okay, but it's two years, so we're not going to be able to fix everything.
Close.
Remember, we're two million, we're really close.
4.1 million dollars.
And the reason, yeah, the reason I'm asking there is because I know we have looked at possibly putting maintenance salaries into that 2.1, and I wanted to know the briefing room we had, and it sounds like we don't have a lot.
And it's also just one time, so it's kind of like, probably, in my opinion, wouldn't be the wisest use of the funds.
Right. I was thinking of just hiring a, or looking at using those funds, but again, it's open for discussion, for a director of our maintenance facilities.
For sure.
And knowing that it's just a one-year thing, because that's part of the proposal cut.
I know we keep saying it's a one-year thing, but I'm just saying that we have the ability to be flexible with that money. If our professionals that deal with that deem it's necessary to use it that way, I want to give them the ability to do that. We can always have that ability and go back, right? If we do it versus not, that's, that's my plan.
I would like to see.
We wouldn't have to make that decision on how it's going to be used right now, but I would want to be able to have that ability.
To use it for what?
For salaries.
For salary, and I guess I feel like it should be used for the salaries of the people who are already on the grounds. That should, I feel, come out of them. Do one year, and then the next year, we find ourselves in the same position, I like to keep that in the general budget.
I'd like to talk about it at a later time, when we have all the information, because I don't feel like I have enough of the information to make a decision, because we don't know, like, are we, are we paying a salary for one year instead of what, you know?
Well, that, that's my question that we'd have to look at, but I'm just throwing that out for us to think about.
And what if we don't have another next year, then we just saved it for one year versus fixing something that I feel like might be more important?
Yeah, I just want to know if we have a cushion there to do both, that's my question.
That's my concern.
I think, I think we can make some decisions later, I'm just saying, when we get to that point for that motion for the budget, to have that ability in there, in that motion, because we can, like I said, we can always come back, we can go forward.
I think it's built into the bill, right? Like, it's built into the law. Like it's built into the law that you can use it for maintenance salaries or maintenance.
So if we.
Correct. Yeah. If we accept it, I think it's accepting that part of it.
Yeah. And it's accepting, I think, the one year that we may be in the same situation.
Right.
If it doesn't pass, there's things we have to decide.
Okay.
And I think it's good just about this, you know, keeping, just only closing the ANX means no budget savings. And I think that's important for everyone to know. Like, it's one reason why it was submitted as an idea from the administration because we were looking at all ways of, of saving money and, um, yeah. So now we are removing that ability to save money.
Correct. So by not closing the building, there's no savings. So we have to find savings somewhere else and put more people on the list to come up with 2.5 million dollars.
But I just want to add that's how important we felt keeping Hubbard open was.
Mm-hmm.
So I want that to be noted that we felt like it was important to save Hubbard. That we care about these people and we care about the students and we care about the staff.
And I think one, one motivating factor for me was to just allow the students to not be as compact into the other schools. And I think, you know, displacing them would have done that. But, so I do like this point. But I guess what we have to cut next, we won't like as much.
Correct. So, um, I know people are looking for the list. And the list with the details is not attached to the slide. And there is a reason for that. But you have access to this list and hopefully we print it, right? We, we printed so it's right next to. And the reason is because it has all the details, uh, the list of proposed cuts. And there's some information that I call it a personally identifiable information, even though we didn't list the names, but just by the description of the position. And if there is, it's only one position in the district, then it's really easy to guess. And, um, employees feel very vulnerable right now. And in respect to our employees who are on that list, um, so for now, only you have access to this list. But this information will be public after the meeting, you know, and we can provide it upon the request. But in terms of conversations, let's refer to that list, you know, if you have any questions. Uh, Director Graves has it as well and we can talk about it. But first of all, I would like to, um, you know, emphasize that, um, our administration probably spent 80-plus hours to go into iterations and iterations. And when it comes to budget, when it comes to budget cuts, you know, all decisions are bad decisions. You just have to come up with the methodology, you know, to reduce the negative impact on students and teachers. That was goal number one. So the, the initial step to start with the district's office positions. So the list that you have is proposing to eliminate five positions and the workload is going to be spread amongst, among the ones who remain. And, um, and then, so what I'm going to do, I'm going to talk about the list. Then because it's a form of budget hearing, I will tell you how it's implemented in the big picture, what that means for the fund balance. And then when it comes to motion, I'm going to give you some time and space to discuss so then you can make the final decision. And then also, um, the next step, once you're done with the district's office, you go and you start looking outside of classrooms, right? Classified, certified personnel, very valuable, but not in the classroom. So, um, Director Graves and Kim Bakarow did a very good job talking to them. If they could become teachers, that means the savings for us, we would eliminate their positions. But they're not going to lose their jobs, you know, they, they, um, so they only truly, by looking at this list and hopefully, and I'm looking at Director Graves, only three, um, employees truly lost their jobs and will have to seek for an employment. Um, they did an amazing job finding a spot for all, um, 10 plus by, for all 12 FTS. FT stands for full-time accrual. And so the methodology was to, to gather people from outside of the classrooms and asking them to be in the classroom. And so the, like then, once we were done with this, the next step, okay, let's start looking into the classrooms. And the proposal is to not, so currently we have five openings. And you have a breakdown which schools and the proposal is to hold on and not fill in those positions. And those are teachers in the classroom. So in addition to that, we were able to do some shifts and shift certain, um, employees from the general fund to different sources of finding such federal funds. And we've been working with the Office of Drug Policy and like, we even have a rule, only call once a day. If Kim Bakarow calls, I don't call. If I call, she doesn't call. So we don't overdo it. But the goal is, and we already have, you know, verbal promises. And, um, but not all of it is in the writing, but the verbal confirmation along with the federal grants from the state or little pieces, we're removing, um, our SROs from general funding. And they're going to be fully, um, funded by the federal grant. So that means that savings for the general fund.
Is that just one year?
Oh, yeah. All grants are one year. So you, even with the state, you have to come back and keep asking and asking. But that's what we do for many, many grants. Everything other than general fund, you have to apply each year. Now, kind of the same information, um, more summarized. And then of course, we also looked, you know, is there anything other than people? Can we, can we cut down on curriculum? Can we do something with the schedule? Can we cut down on our technology expenses? Because, you know, our SRO funds, the pandemic really funds were mostly used for technology. And, um, so kind of altogether, the, um, administration was able to come up with 2.5 plus little sum million dollar reduction, which is already a part of the proposed budget. And just a reminder, um, only three employees will truly lose their job. But if we go beyond that list, everybody who goes beyond that list, they will truly lose their job as well. And with that said, um, I know you really want to talk about it, but would you like to talk about it before we move on? Or should I go?
I just have a question about curriculum spending. That's important to me.
Correct.
As an educator and I, I think as a parent in the school district, some of the curriculum that comes out of that. I know that's a lot of money, but I talked with you, Mr. Gifford.
Right.
And my understanding is there may be some other ways to create some of these programs that the teachers have used as supplemental and, and to give them that, um, to be able to help them.
Yeah. And not just. There's, there's some free versions of things that don't work as well, but they could be used. Even within the curriculum budget that's remaining, none of the, none of the renewals have been paid yet. We've been waiting for this meeting to make sure that the funding is still there.
Right.
So even, uh, some of the renewals could be potentially short if we need to.
Okay.
That doesn't save you money long-term though.
Right.
It would.
I, I know as a past teacher in the classroom, some of those supplemental programs I use. And it, again, we're asking a lot of teachers. And I just want to make sure that there may be a, a place that we can go to help them with that.
And none of these are these things, they're all things that are being used because they're useful and helpful to teachers.
And I understand that.
Right.
So I'm just wondering if there's, and I know we've talked about some different other areas. And I know you're creative. Um, and I just want to make sure that, um, those that are listening in here understand that I, this is not something I want to do.
Right.
But it, it saves the main curriculum, Mr. Alman. Okay, thank you.
So before we make a decision and finalize the list, I do need to show you what it looks in terms of revenue and expenses and the fund balance. And then we can go back to the conversation. So just because there is a change since my last presentation in May, in terms of revenue, this slide is only showing revenue for general fund. And the main change is, as you can see, the supplemental levy is removed. So the revenue that we're going to budget is 2.5 million dollar less. It's 43.2. And everything else remains the same. Expenses, as you can see, instead of 49 million dollars, the amount is 46.4. Um, it already includes the 2.5 million dollar reduction. It already includes all the salaries adjustments that were presented to you earlier. Everything has been included here, all the considerations. And as you can see, just, I, like the difference between the year before, the rev, the expense was only increased by 1.7. It's, it's very impressive considering that we were shifting SRO expenses and inflation and all other stuff. So with that said, every decision that you make today, if you approve the budget as is, then the expenditure amount remains the same. If you make any changes, if you approve the budget with certain changes and stated, that will affect this amount one way or another. And of course, it will affect the fund balance one way or another. And as you can see, the fund balance, the projected with this proposal is 14%, which is a little bit higher than what I presented earlier. It's just because the list that you have in front of you, it's not just rounded 2.5 million dollars. It actually go, it's a little bit more than that. And, you know, every dollar changes the fund balance percentage. So with that said, and, um, the detailed budget document, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but I left comments that like, you know, tomorrow I will adjust and finalize the budget document upon today's decision. But it includes the information that I presented today. And, um, so usually, since, since it's a very difficult decision, you know, and, um, it feels right to give you two options, right? You can approve budget as presented and accept the list of proposed cuts that are presented to you. But that were prepared by our administration. Or you can approve the budget contingent upon the changes. And just, you will need to state the changes. We do not have to add up the amounts exactly, but if you, you, if you clearly change and, if you clearly state the change, I'll write it down and then I will adjust the amount accordingly. So as long as it's clear what the change is. And with that said, um, I'm going to go back to any slide that you would like to keep on. And we are open for any conversations or discussions. And, you know, I have the list printed. I prepared for all possible questions that you may have. And if I don't have the answers quickly, you know, so hopefully we can get them to you as soon as possible.
So it says 20.5 general fund positions. It says five, we have five certified positions. So are you asking, saying you're getting rid of all five of them?
Are you talking about the teachers, interventionists or?
No, it says two certified, five.
Yeah, that is, my understanding, you can answer that, is the attrition? Through them leaving, am I correct? Or they're, and we're just not fulfilling, we're not replacing.
We're not replacing the positions. There are open positions. They've retired.
Yeah, they've retired.
Mm-hmm. Or.
Is that called attrition? Did I say the right word? Thank you.
For the district.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we have 6.5 instructional coaches. We're keeping or getting rid of 1.5, correct?
Actually 2.5 because if you look down, the cuts in the Title I A grant, you're getting rid of the very bottom.
It's 2.5 on the very last line. One of them, one of them is the position. 1.5 is eliminated out of the general fund. And one, the proposal is to eliminate one position that's funded by Title I A funds. And the reason behind it is to release some funds and allow the buildings to keep their paraprofessionals. Or whatever. Or whatever they decide, whatever they do necessary depending on the situation.
Which I like that idea.
Yes. Originally, we were getting rid of paraprofess.
The, so the way it works with federal funds, with Title I A funds, um, the allocation is not guaranteed. We don't receive the same allocation. And unfortunately, uh, we're budgeted, we're funded based on census data.
Right.
The census poverty data is not in our favor. And the allocation is going to be reduced by almost, you know, $100,000. And what it does, it really affects the buildings because they're all going to get a reduction. And as a result, they would have to eliminate paraprofessionals positions because we cannot use. Currently, we do not use general funds to pay for paraprofessionals, only federal. By eliminating, uh, one instructional coach that is also paid out of Title I A funds, that releases some funds for the buildings to either keep paraprofessionals or make other decisions. Because we let them.
Which makes me feel sad that they decide how much money we get by how many poor people we have.
Unfortunately, yes.
Other people who have reading issues and math issues and so, but I'm just going to say that now here. We know that we can't do anything about that. So.
Unfortunately not. The census data, we cannot control. It's not guaranteed to such data.
And so we come across with our census as high as.
Eagle and Meridian.
And so that's why we're making this instead of what we need.
Correct.
Thank you. Who knew?
Doesn't feel like it, but that's what it is.
No, no. And that's why we get that amount of money, which doesn't make sense to me, but that's the legal government, I guess.
I know you guys have been working your tails off through this. And I just want to tell you, thank you for all the extra hours that you put in. And I just want to say, good job. And, um, good job.
Yes. Yes. And thank you to Michael Keith for coming up with.
Yes.
The idea to.
The funds almost got a nickname, Michael's money. And I'm like, please stop. You can't call it Michael's. Let's go larval mining. Anyway.
Do, so this motion, um, can, is there a couple of motions we need to make here? Can I make a motion to accept House Bill 292? Or is that, it's in the?
It's in the budget.
It's already in the budget.
Proposed budget already. But yes, I, I guess if you think about it, yes, the motion to accept House Bill 292.
So this budget has taken a long, a lot of time. And for you to come up with what you did, I feel like you've made cuts across the board, not just pointed people out. And, um, personally, um, I'm just going to say that instructional coaches are important to this district and to our principals and to most of all, our kids. Uh, and that being said, I just need to let you know that I've worked in the school district and those coaches help teachers who need help. And I have permission from my son to say this tonight. He has been hired at the high school as a, um, non-certified yet, but he's taking a, a different path. And he would like you to know that he relies heavy on his coach every day, that he goes to her and says, I need help. And she is there for him. And that is what makes good teachers. And I know that there are not all good teachers in that district, as it's just as much as they're not all good doctors. But having these instructional coaches give a chance for those teachers to understand good class practices. That being said, I know as a teacher, I didn't always have time to find programs to help, um, increase my scores as a teacher. And to have those instructional coaches find programs and bring them to the principals and the principals bring them to us, save me a lot of time. And I think that, I'm sorry that we're going to go down to, I believe it's four instructional coaches.
Yes. After, um, so with this proposal, eliminating 2.1 position and four remains.
I think that that will suffice. And, yeah, I just want to make that known, that I think it's important. It's important to our students. And that to me is the number one reason I'm here on the board. So.
I just, I have a couple of questions. So it, it looks like, um, interventionists for, are, are some, a place that's being cut quite heavily. Um, and I feel like my feedback from teachers has been that those interventionists are, are extremely valuable, particularly with elementary kids. Um, so, and, and in my reaching out, almost all teachers said that, um, that the instructional coaches had value, but they would rate the, the, um, it's the interventionists and paraprofessionals as higher priority on their list of people to keep. So I just wanted to bring that up as a possible change out based on feedback from that I have heard. So I just wanted to bring that up as a possible change out based on feedback from that I have heard. I mean, we've all received a lot of emails. And so I, I wanted to just bring up these, this five point five interventionists that we'll be losing. And have a discussion about that.
Well, I just wanted to say too, like, it doesn't mean we have to get rid of all instructional coaches. Because some schools say they're valuable and some teachers say they're not. So I think it just depends too on the teachers and who they have and who's at their school. And I did hear feedback on Title One schools specifically covered their, their coach is very valuable. And I'm sure there's another school or two that also thinks they're valuable. So you could take the two, keep two and take the other two and maybe give a stipend to teachers that are willing to be a mentor. Because another teacher did say she has done that before as a teacher. She got a stipend and she was a mentor instructional coach. So there are other options to having instructional coaches than paying a hundred thousand dollars per coach that allows us to free up some of the budget, still keep ways to have instructional coaches, but also keep other jobs that are also very important. And maybe figuring out what schools, maybe the instructional coach kind of floats around. But we have to have the conversation of what is more beneficial to students and teachers in the classroom and how we can move money around and make it beneficial for everyone.
I guess my feeling on that is we have hired good administrators who have come up with a budget that they can stand by, live by. And they're the ones who face every day the questions that will come up. And so I feel that if they, I bet you they, and maybe I'm wrong, but I'm sure that maybe they have a way that they're going to take care of those interventionists in the school. And so I'd like to hear that because what Hillary said.
I, I can't speak specifically to what he's, I know as a former principal, I would have a plan a hundred percent to figure out coaching intervention. We did when we brought interventions in, remember, we brought that in during COVID to close the gap. We did tell people a hundred percent, these are gonna be positions that go away when the COVID money goes away. We've already taken the secondary intervention teachers away this past year. So only the elementary sat them in our alternative schools.
So is that mean intervention at the high school will not be there?
It wasn't there this year. We, we got rid of our secondary intervention teachers.
So when they do intervention during the line?
The teacher that sat in the position of intervention, same with both middle schools. They, they call intervention their lunch program. Intervention is a person initiative program as well.
And then what about like, for example, language arts teacher had a floating teacher that came in. Are those positions still safe or did we get rid of that?
We can't hear you.
Yeah, can you talk a little longer?
So in high school, there's a language arts teacher, a floating teacher who came in and helped in the classroom. So are we cutting those positions too?
No, so two of our intervention teachers have, one is moving. And the other one had already moved to districts as well. So two of our positions were open. What's happening?
The Title One funds at the elementary level are still used for intervention. So even though the Title Ones funds have been reduced, there are still staff that are paid out of that one fund that do the intervention at elementary. So they've been reduced, so some pairs might be reduced, but they do still have intervention funds. The, when we talk intervention here, we're not saying there's no more intervention. We're saying specifically these intervention teachers that were hired during COVID to close that gap, those positions are welcome to eliminate. So all teachers do intervention in their own classrooms. And then there's other systems set up within the building to do intervention time.
For example, wind.
Yes, the wind, you've, you've heard all the schools that come and talk about their wind time. And at the high school, they have their lunch, I can't remember what it's called here. Cape, yes. So there's intervention systems still in place. We're talking specifically about those intervention positions that were hired from S R.
And they were also made to help those kids that were behind.
Closing the gap.
Because closing the gap. And so we do have some programs that do cover that. In a perfect world, would I love interventions in the school? Of course I would. But we're not looking at a perfect world right here. We're looking at some budget cuts because a levy did pass and it's tough.
And we do have another slide that says twenty five, twenty six and ideas of how we're to get there.
How we get some.
And it does say, continue to review positions.
Well, and then also instructional coaches don't make a hundred thousand dollars, they make seventy one thousand dollars.
But the compensation package altogether is ninety eight thousand.
Yeah, but teachers, that compensation package is not that far off between just regular teachers as well. And they're putting more time in.
Yeah, they're paid for extra, five extra days.
And a stipend of five thousand.
An additional five thousand.
I'm just saying, if you break it down, you can't save that.
It's seventy one thousand eight hundred and sixty.
Because in the average pay, correct me if I'm wrong, because they fall in different places on the scale. So the average pay is sixty seven.
It's not individual, so it's average.
And those coaches are usually teachers who have been here a while in our district.
Yes.
Had their master's degree.
Their experience.
Their experience. And that is why their tool is very full.
That's so apparent. Well.
What'd you say?
So apparent. I'm not necessarily advocating for all of the instructional coach positions to be removed right now. But I just think that it's important information that in my email inbox, I heard from a lot of teachers that said, if you're, if you're getting rid of positions, the instructional coach would be the where to go. And so I think that that's really good information. I also heard in my email inbox, keep the instructional coaches. So we have, we have plenty of people that don't think they're as valuable and in fact, see them as more of a hindrance to the process. And, and I personally, I'm not saying that. I'm representing what people have said to me because I don't really know. I don't have information or experience personally as a teacher with that. But we've heard a lot of information on both sides of that. And, and so I think that's important to take what the teachers are saying to us and, and make sure we're hearing that.
I make a motion that we approve the budget for twenty four, twenty five, which has been presented to us by our administration.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, any more discussion?
Are we still allowed to make changes?
No.
No.
Not unless we make a provisionally, a provisionally approved with contingencies.
We have a second.
So, yeah, Kirsty.
After the second, don't you have the opportunity for discussion?
That's what I said. So more discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I have a question. So the director of strategic partnerships, are they going part-time or did they remove it?
So the list includes the elimination of the position unless you would like to make a motion to make changes and not to add this position to the list and negotiate a part-time and outside of the budget. But right now, the proposal that was put together is to eliminate positions unless you make a motion to make changes to that.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because I had, I overlooked that part of it.
Jessica.
Um, yeah, we received a proposal really from a few places, but, but also from her to possibly go to ten hours, which would take her from receiving benefits and then reduce her salary by about half. Is that correct?
So what would the half be that you're looking at, the amount of money?
Ten hours for twenty, twenty-five.
Yeah, so it'd be like twenty six thousand.
How much did you say?
Twenty six thousand dollars instead of fifty one, eight ninety-eight.
And no benefits.
And no benefits.
I think when you start talking about direct relation with our education and students in the classroom, that we put all our eggs in that basket and not in that. When we have, we do have three other people that can, it's not gonna be perfect. None of this is gonna be perfect. But we have three other people that can pick up the slack and be at those three meetings. I don't, I don't. It's gonna be.
Mr. Reno?
Mr. Reno, Mr. Graves. Who's the?
Yeah, who's the three people?
Who's the third person? Is it Mr. Bickers?
W. Jason.
Yeah, probably Mr. Ready.
Oh, that's right, Mr. Ready, that's right. So there's three people that can go, the point, I, the point on return and investment and the money that you're spending for that position is, I don't feel like we're gonna lose that much money by having those three personnel go to those meetings. I don't think it makes sense.
Well, I feel like we're all ready to reducing the, the district staff and asking our, you know, admin to take on all the additional duties, that it would be nice to remove that from their plate and at ten hours. I mean, it was like one of the, one of the biggest difficult sticking points in the entire school board member election, that everybody was worried that this would go away based on the votes of the new people.
This isn't gonna go, that won't go away.
Yeah, I think it will be damaged for sure. I think it really will. I think it will. And Russ Johnson emailed and said that he really believed that it would. And so did the mayor, so did Danielle. I mean, we received emails by people that have been involved in the process, worried about the process. And I would like to still see those, you know, the money coming in from those developers.
And I believe that she brings the knowledge and expertise that other people don't bring. And there's value to her position.
So I thought about this long and hard. And I've got back and forth. Because this particular position has nothing to do with children. And we're making cuts from people that do work with kids. And I get the fact that she does bring some money. And, and I too have talked with Mr. Johnson about this. If I had to make a compromise, it bothers me to do that, knowing that we're doing away with a, a nurse. And that we're doing away with some people that are actually there. And I feel like if we're doing that, then we need to show where we are at. But that being said, I'm a compromised person, hello. I am willing to, because she suggested ten hours, maybe doing the twenty-six that you guys decided because down below, we do have a cushion of eighty six thousand.
Where do you see that?
At the very bottom, two point five eighty-six thousand.
Oh. I mean, whatever we don't cut, this year we've got a cushion.
And I get that too.
And it's double.
If it's a cushion.
Because it's this year end.
The other suggestion that I'll throw out that I've thought about a lot is, I wanna keep the coaches, but I realize they make a stipend of five thousand. And I would probably be willing to do twenty five hundred, which would save us twelve thousand off this budget.
I mean, or we can allow teachers to be mentors and get them a stipend and cut to.
I, I don't like that idea because that's not what's been presented and because I feel we need those coaches.
Well, like Hillary said, and I've gotten the same email, some people think they're valuable and some people don't, teachers.
I think, I think it's something that we probably could debate all night. I think it's time to vote on it.
Okay. So that being said, those are some ideas. We have a first, we have a second, we've had discussion. So.
I'd like to make a second motion and I'm not real clear on the process, but am I doing it right, Deanna?
I move to.
I move to provisionally approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four revised budget and twenty twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget contingent upon the following conditions being met. And I'd like to, to reduce the director of strategic partnerships to ten hours rather than cut a position completely. And I would also add that we could, in addition, add Kim's idea of reducing the stipend to twenty five hundred dollars for the remaining instructional coaches.
Um, I only wanted to do half, so that would have been twenty five hundred.
Well.
You wanna do.
What do you mean?
They get a stipend of five thousand.
Right, so that's what I mean. We're reducing it to twenty five hundred dollars instead of five thousand.
Okay, that comes out to twelve thousand five hundred was my figuring. But I only do thirty, forty grade math.
Whatever comes out to would be half of what they're being paid correctly.
I'll do the math.
Just wanna make sure that's okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And so I, I mean, that's, that's my motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Any other discussion? Okay. Kirsty.
Aye.
Michael.
The one that Hillary just did.
Let's vote, let's vote on the first one.
Sorry, yes, I'm sorry, that's right, we do have to vote on the first one. And I apologize.
No.
Okay, Michael.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's three to two, motion carries.
All right, so that means.
Just to clarify, that means approve as presented.
Correct.
With no changes at all, not, nothing, no stipends, not much, right?
Correct.
Okay. And accepting House Bill two ninety-two.
Correct.
True, that's the acceptance proposal from Michael, okay.
Oh, it was hard.
I know it's hard.
Yeah, I could speak for myself, it's hard to do this. And I'm hoping that if we go for another levy, we will have more community members help us so that we don't have to do these cuts again because it's hard.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you so much. So and this one, so, so now what we just did, we just approved the budget for twenty four, twenty-five school year, a partial cut of two point five million dollars. There's some homework to do because we still have to choose a good path for the district, for the remaining. Three, hopefully less, you know, hopefully less depending, because I know the superintendent of public construction is working on revising the formula, that could answer a lot of questions. But so, so what we did was collecting some feedback, put a list together. And there is no good or bad ideas. There's just some ideas that are on the table, that we're putting and logging in. And if you have more ideas, please let us know. But these are the conversations that we're gonna start as early as July. Because the sooner we start, the better it is. It's what can we do to help us in the future? Should we go for supplemental levy? Should we start rethinking our structure to see if we can reduce our expenses one way or another? So our homework is to research all those items. Come back to you. Probably wouldn't have all answers in July, but as soon as we have the answer, we're just gonna, you know, start presenting. And there is, there is a lot of homework to do and we're gonna start tomorrow.
And I have another question. Is one of those, I guess it's not a conversation about more reduction. The conversation would be, can we take a look at doing another levy or trying to pass another levy in November? That's down there?
Yes, another conversations that.
And when would you admit, when would you say that we need to start having that conversation? Should it be next month?
Today.
Today, tomorrow?
The sooner the better.
Okay.
The deadline is by September sixteenth.
Yes, I get, I understand that, but I just wanted to make sure that that's on the plate also that we're gonna do.
Honestly, you know, November or May, you know, none of those dates are good dates. But November is better than May because look what's happening right now. You know, we have to make decisions within such a short period of time. That's why November is always a good time to start. At least if something doesn't work, we still have May versus with May, you know, we only have one opportunity. So yes, so we're gonna start preparing some communications and conversations.
The other thing I noticed on KMSnow, there was a lot of comment on why are they having the election in May and November? And I think it needs to be, it needs to be said that we have no other choice because this is what the legislature has passed. So if it doesn't pass in November, then we have to wait till the next May. And if it doesn't pass again, we have to wait till November. And I think that's important for the community to know that we don't, can't just, can't just pick a day.
We cannot pick a day.
So I just wanna make sure that that's also said.
I just wanna speak to one thing, I mean, the child nutrition unpaid balances. And I know Val has been working really hard on that. We've been working with a person from Feed the Gap. And Val sent a very really nice email of why we are where we are. It's because of the free reduced lunch and the form that a person has to fill out and what they qualify for, or what people say they're not poverty hasn't changed in a couple of years. And so they don't qualify. And yet they're making decisions on, are items like gas from my car, groceries or, anyway. Val has worked with really hard, sent a beautiful long email to the Feed the Gap people that reached out to us. And she responded like Friday, I think, Val, looking at Val with, thank you very much. This was great information and what the. And she responded like Friday, I think. Val, looking at Val with thank you very much, this was great information and what the whole debt was. And so I'm hoping that by Ju, in July, that she, well, I know she will, she'll have a, like what they're gonna give us. So they will give us something to help us with, cause I know that was one of your questions, um, Trustee Bruce. But I, I, they've been very good to us in the past and we needed help. So that one could be a hopeful positive for us.
I noticed on here it said that we're gonna ask for an emergency policy change in, change in June. Um, is that gonna happen today? Um, and that's about the activity blessing?
We would bring that to you in July.
July.
We didn't wanna be reception. I'll have it ready.
Okay.
And, um, another homework from Mr. Graves and, um, and all of us. So it's time for us to shift the gears and start working on the facilities funding because it's gonna be first come, first served at the state, so we're just gonna be the first ones who are ready to submit a plan. We're just gonna work on the tenure plan and at the same time, we're gonna work on the critical maintenance priorities. You know, what's the first on the list? And, um, that's gonna start as soon as tomorrow.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. So, and with that said, um, I think that's it for the budget presentation. Thank you so much. And you can have a sit and start. I think the next one is the policy one.
Yeah, policies.
I just wanna really say though, thank you to Almira because she has spent hours and hours. But even to, her husband on Friday said, Almira, I'll take you to a nursery nearby any tree or plant.
And you don't know one tree's in the backyard, yeah.
And that was because we've seen, you know, the long hours that, that she's put in and everything she's done, so she got two new plans. Really good, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to everybody.
Thank you to everybody.
Yes.
Hard decision.
Yeah, my name's gotta go on those budget cuts because that was my motion.
Well, thank you.
For putting your name out there.
Put your name out there. Okay.
So I, I know that I have a bad nickname as, as policy king. This is a different way to do this. Um, because these are your policies, literally. So the first one is two sixty-two. Um, I flew in a guest to help me, um, so you have to.
Don't say we spent.
No, it was a paper airplane. Uh, at the very bottom, her name is on here, so any questions or any, she's gonna, she's gonna jump in and help. Um, but policy two sixty-two combines four old policies into one. So I, I just went clean. To, to do the red, it would've got really confusing, um, for me even. Chair Nixon not just, because it gets really, you know how it gets, so. I, I thought we'd just kinda roll through it and you guys tell me, remember that if it's italicized, that means we have to either decide if we're gonna take it or not. There are some items that we have to fill in where it gives choice.
The, I think it was, yeah, I think it was this one. I did have a.
Do you want to just start at the top and then see if you guys just kinda?
I have, I have some notes, so when you get to the spot, I can, you know.
Yeah.
So first paragraph, did anybody have anything?
I have no changes.
Annual meeting part, well, this is literally when everyone's completed. Nobody likes to fall asleep. Way to go, annual meetings.
Yeah, I have a, um, where it says that the first regular meeting after the January first. Um, I think it should say, should get rid of directly following an election. Um, because previously it's been done every year and that seems to be more in keeping with what the code says.
Yeah, I like that because there's an election every year, but we do wanna do the new thing on January first, right?
Yeah, so we get that language does come directly from the statute.
Oh, it does?
It's written, you know, if I just, as an FYI, I will always follow what the language of the statute says. So if it's written that way, it's written that way to follow then.
So what do we do on the years we don't? Does that mean I can chair for two years? Please tell me no.
When I looked it up at the ones that were, um, referenced here, it says, it says the regular meeting in January and it doesn't say directly following an election. That was what's previously been in our policy, but it doesn't reflect what says on Title thirty-three in Education, Chapter five, District Trustees, thirty-three, five oh six. I'm okay with scratching it.
I, I, I think it makes more sense, Jill, to, to scratch that.
Usually I.
You can keep going though.
You'll look it up. So we'll jump back there. Regular meetings, this is where we're gonna have to fill in some things. I, just for reference, I put what we're doing now. So unless otherwise specified, a meeting will be held at the Kuna School District Office, Office Conference Room. That's where we are right now.
I'm fine with that unless you wanna change it to that it'll be determinantly at that January meeting. That's what I have in my notes, but. I mean, he said to specify the location and I am fine with doing that. Or another option would be to just say that we would determine that spot every year annually in January, which is I think what we've been doing.
That's what we've been doing.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm honestly fine with either one.
Yeah, you, you, these are your meetings, you guys, yeah, I just, I just put them in there just to reference what we're doing.
Okay, so do you wanna keep it as is or do you wanna change it? Yes or?
Keep it as is.
Keep it as is. We'll just decide over here.
Okay, regular meetings are held at a specific time. I put six P M. I don't know if you guys wanna determine that annually. Yeah.
Isn't that what we discussed?
So the meetings are at six-thirty and executive sessions are at six, yeah.
Six, and.
Six or six fifteen.
I did wanna change it up, but I'm totally free for whatever you decide. I, in the past, we have a new superintendent and in the past, we had, um, schools come and present, we had a lot of people out here. So I kinda wanted to start the meeting, do that presentation and then go into executive meeting.
And that we, that's what you want on the agenda?
I, I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but it seems like there's people out here and we're.
Or I mean, what you want.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just saying, yeah, that is something I wanted to have.
Or if they see the agenda and we, it says executive session and then the next meeting starts at six-thirty, it feels better to like let them.
No.
Know not to come till six-thirty.
Right, and, and, and I think when we say that, it's important that we as a board make sure we're out at six-thirty. And if we have to go in, we go in after the meeting so that we can make sure that we're here for those people that are here on time.
Oh, you mean do the executive session at the end?
If we go more than a half hour.
Oh.
I'm just trying to help the people that are here.
Right, I think we do it at six and then go from six to six-thirty. That should be fine at ten.
So do we say the meeting starts at six? Either way, is that how we say it?
Um, Jill, do we say executive session starts at six and regular meeting at six-thirty? How would we put that?
Um, you could put executive session as starting at six o'clock and regular meeting starting at six-thirty.
Okay.
Just to keep people not having to say.
Yeah, well, there's been time for only a fifteen minutes, so it's been six fifteen, but that executive session, I think we can, we make the agenda. Go either six or six fifteen depending on how much stuff we have.
Cause you're not gonna know.
And we won't know until we do the agenda.
We used to meet at seven, two.
I'm, I'm good. I'm doing a six.
Yeah, let's move, let's keep it moving.
Okay, keep going.
Specify that day, currently we're the second Tuesday.
Correct, I find it out.
Anything else in regular meeting? Keep moving? Yep. Special meetings?
Also find there.
Anybody else? Keep going. Keep going. Emergency meetings?
Find with that.
Executive sessions?
Also find with me.
And I'm just, since I referenced Idaho code, I'm assuming these are straight from Idaho code that the matters addressed in the executive session, I mean. Trustee Grant almost read this perfectly today. Final decisions? And these are in regards to executive session. Keep going. Notice an agenda? Prohibition against discussing unidentified subjects. Public participation?
Okay, I have something there. Um, the sentence, I think it's the second sentence in the paragraph. It says the manner in which public comment and request for agenda items will governed. I just think it needs another word in there. Like will be governed or something like that.
So you're just looking for will be?
Will be governed.
Yeah, will be governed would be governed.
This makes sense. Are governed.
Excuse, excuse me, we can't have any talk from the. That's okay. I'm sure, I'm sure you're just thinking out loud, sorry. It's okay.
Well, in the beginning, when it says items submitted by the board chair or at least two board members, does that mean chair and vice chair?
Right now.
In the very beginning.
Are you on the next one?
No, in the board meeting rules and procedures, on the very top.
Are you on policy number two sixty-two?
Point one.
Oh, I don't, we haven't moved.
We haven't moved there yet.
We're into public participation, so.
And we're looking at will.
The manner in which public comment and request for agenda items are governed or will be governed. I'm fine with whatever the lawyer says that he's appropriate and not.
I, I, yeah, I'm fine.
Just a grammar change is all.
We got notes taken. I just keep looking at my two people taking notes for me. They make me look good. Board decisions?
And that's why we have them in our lives.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think we're, where you're at, Kirsty.
Do you wanna jump back to the? Oh, we have.
We have to.
She's on the second, she's on the second policy area.
Sorry.
But do you wanna, so do you wanna go very back to the, to the part that we had a question?
Yes.
Jill was looking at.
I'm gonna change that by the way. Question, the directly, directly following an election.
We are fine to change it.
Good.
There we go.
I should take it.
It's in the notes.
So then.
That's the end of.
Every year we will decide a chair and vice chair.
So, um, we need a motion to accept this?
I'll make a motion to accept the policy two sixty-two with the, for the first reading.
Alright, so that would be my only question to you guys is this, and then the second, we'll come back in July for second hand orders if you guys have decided to make it.
With the updates outlined here.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
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 And aye for me.
So the touch longer, and it's two sixty-two point one. I know Trustee below doesn't love the decimal points, but better than a fraction. I'm visiting math teachers here. This one does have quite a bit of italicized. Remember for italicized, we've decided we are taking it. So this one, and it's a little longer.
I do have some questions about this one.
So I, so the first, the second sentence, items submitted by the board chair or at least two board members. Are we saying that the chair and the vice chair will be the ones creating the agenda? Is that what that means?
So you want that very first sentence? Cause right now we, the agenda?
Cause it's not three of us, it's only the chair and the vice chair.
And the board chair.
It's the board chair or two other members can put things on the agenda.
So I guess that's my question, Jill.
Or creating the agenda.
I think the first sentence is about creating the agenda and then the next one is items submitted.
And I think that's the updated law that has just gone into place starting July first and that's what's been keeping with that new law. And I.
I guess my question is, we have always done the superintendent, the board chair and vice chair.
Correct.
For agenda.
For the very first sentence.
For the very first sentence.
So you wanted to read superintendent, comma, board chair and vice chair.
Cause I feel like two board members should be in there.
Oh, that's what I'm thinking.
And then for the second sentence, items submitted by board chair or at least two.
Okay, that's different. I was thinking creating the agenda.
My, my question to that is, if we're making the agenda, then two people out here can also say what they want the agenda as long as they're in agreement. Is that what that's saying?
Yes.
It's saying that two board members can submit.
Something to be put on the agenda prior to the meeting.
Why is it only two? I'm just curious. What, what if like one each of us has something they're working on the agenda? I'm just saying, like, that doesn't make sense.
It's, it's what the law says now. Like it's, it's a way for board members to get something on the agenda. Like for instance, if Kirsty and I want something on the agenda and Kim does not, and we both wanna put it on the agenda, we can submit it and she has to put it on the agenda.
Okay, so like if you have something and Michael had something and I had something, we could still.
That's what I read it.
Yeah.
Okay, so either way, someone, all three of us could if we wanted to.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Okay, just saying.
To me, that's new. I've never seen that before, Jill.
Yeah, and I think it is new.
Is that?
Did you speak to that just yet? So that's.
The two, that had, that has been in there for a while now. I don't think that was changed this year.
Well, I, I don't think any of us knew about that.
We, we weren't updating as often, so it may not have been on ours.
Oh, right, yeah. No, I don't think that has changed recently. And I, I always forget exactly which section of the law that's in, but I think that's been that way for a while.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
So the first sentence, we will add vice chair, so there's three people.
Can we do what we want with that or does it have to be this? Like, can we change that to?
Typically the, I, I think we, our practice has been the board chair and vice chair is met with the superintendent, so I don't, I don't know why we could.
Yeah, and that part is really left up to your discretion. I think it's been done that way.
I don't know if that matters.
I mean, I'm fine with doing this for the first reading and we'll do some research and come back for another type, for the next reading.
So the one thing we said was.
Scratch the name, comma, board chair.
Yes, that way there's two trustees and they're.
There's some decisions we have to make in the, the meat of this though.
Well, I read on the back of it that the italics in the text is optional. Does it mean the, like, whether we italics or not or the actual words are the optional?
All of that language is optional. So with the new, with the new legislation this year that requires the rules of procedure, you, all of that language is optional in terms of how specifically you want your procedures to look like because the legislature left it up to each little district to make that decision. So yes, the words themselves are optional.
I, I mean, when I read through the italics part, I really felt like it was not needed. Throughout.
Has this ever been in there before?
Throughout the policy.
Remember this is combined five into one.
I don't think we've ever had a situation where that's happened before.
We do need to make, such requests have to be into the superintendent in five or seven days prior to the scheduled board meeting.
The italics.
Right, but do you?
Or that could be another period of time.
Yeah.
So it could be something to be researched and come back with, um, reading two of the truce.
I would take out this, leave five or seven. I would, I would, I'm hoping you say four or seven. Say five, leave it at that or seven.
I see, I thought five, I thought five was good myself.
Yeah.
I'm fine with five.
And then do we make a call with italics?
I, I think they're trying to get it to be so in case, um, a guy from Texas wanted to put something on our agenda.
Well, yeah, and.
That you gotta say your name, might just pick Texas.
But we can say no anyway, right?
Yeah.
Like our board chair can say no, even if it's not outlined here for, to a guy from Texas.
Well, but what if it's? Go ahead.
Um, I think part of the, the intent of the legislature though was that you would have a procedure in place that specifies, so anybody coming that wants to testify or wants to put something on the agenda that they would know, okay, I have to have it in writing, I have to have my name and my address and who it is that can speak and, you know, all of those kinds of things. So I think some detail is important so that you're letting people know um, because you are required to have some procedures in place by this new law that goes into effect on July first.
Okay.
Um.
Well, I'm fine with this italics section with the thirty minutes inserted time, the forty-eight hours that's inserted there. I don't like the last sentence that says the decision as to, to placement of a requested item on the agenda is final. I, I really should strike that out.
Is that part of the law?
No, it's in italics, so it doesn't have to be put on there.
I don't care.
So in other words, we're saying that anybody from the community can add things to the agenda?
No.
No. A request can be.
They have to make a request.
As long as it's with five days and then we have the opportunity to.
You say yes or no?
Okay, then I'm, I'm fine. I just could see that getting taken. A lot of extra time. A lot of extra time, so.
Okay. So the reasons why we could decline it would be that the res, the request was received less than the five days, or would extend the meeting by thirty minutes.
Days.
Sure, sure, that's, this part where it says five as well.
It's five, five. Yeah. Um, or not directly related to district business, or the item can properly be heard under another agenda item.
Correct.
Individuals who are not residents of the district may request the addition of the agenda item that directly relates, blah, 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 and then within, do we want forty-eight hours there? A written request is received, then we'll respond within forty-eight hours.
Oh, is that something you feel we can do? I think we could do that from Thursday.
Yeah.
Then we can do it.
Yeah, we can do anything, we just finish the budget.
That's like my name.
I'm all about being punctual and trying to save time, and I'm not saying that we, I'm just saying, the thirty minute thing, change that to twenty, twenty minutes, but we can still allow it. I'm just saying, if it, if it's gonna take more than twenty minutes, then maybe it's something to push on.
I mean, I don't even have any idea how you know how long that's gonna take, so maybe we should just remove that entire section. Like, adding the cre- requested item would cause the meeting to be extended by more than, can we just take that out?
I think we need it in there, because you get some crazies that are trying to put stuff on the agenda, and it's happened to me all the time. And so I, I want something in there that I can use.
Yes, can't go on the agenda because it'll increase the.
Oh, like, how are you gonna tell them that, I'm sorry, that's gonna take us more than twenty minutes to talk about? Like, who gets to decide that, just our board chair? I'd like to, I just think it's really ambiguous.
I just want more ability to censor what, like, I, I've had some.
And I would like more ability for people to talk and be here and be heard.
Well, they can, that's what delegations are for.
Through delegations.
I think it's just holding people accountable, instead of taking an hour, you have this X amount of time to talk.
And I'm fine with whatever, because I think it's hard to judge, so it doesn't really matter.
So.
Twenty, thirty, whatever.
It, it would be left up, I guess, to the board chair to make an estimate.
Yeah.
Whatever they're doing.
Yeah.
I would say ten minutes.
Do I hear five?
Maybe if we keep talking about it.
I, I'm fine with twenty.
Yeah, if they're requesting, I'm fine with twenty, and if they actually need another extra five minutes.
I heard twenty, and then, Portia, will you roll onto regular meeting agendas?
Well, I'd like to get rid of the last sentence in there, the decision as to placement of a requested item on the agenda is final, I don't think that's.
We move stuff around before.
And, and what's your reasoning on that, I just need to.
Cause I think we should be able to revisit it, if it's something we decide we want to hear later.
Oh, I thought that was just where it is on the agenda.
Yeah, I looked at it different.
I think it's fit, or ten, the agenda.
Oh, you're talking about the placement is final?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Uh, I don't know if that is. What does that mean, Jill?
The decision as to, uh, placement of a request on the agenda is final, where we put it?
Well, I was thinking that if, if you decide that you don't want it to be placed on the agenda, because the person is not from Idaho or from the district or whatever, then that decision would be final.
But if they, like.
But then it's redundant if that's the way it is, because we've already said that they can't.
But if they come back and say, well, these are the reasons why, and you want to adjust your, your, you know.
Just like if they want to make a second request or a third request?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it feels like you should have some way to, like, reconsider your, your decision.
I think the board, the board chair, vice chair do.
I don't think so, once you've made the decision, it's final, according to this.
Once you've made the decision that you can either be on the agenda or not, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
I guess I don't read it that way.
Yeah, but for that month, you could do it the next month.
No, it, that's not what it says, though.
Robbie, then you have the freedom to change that, you were in.
You could put a time limit, like, you could say that, instead of saying that, you could say, the same item, the same agenda item request may not be made more than, you know.
You could just say the decision as to placement of requested item on the agenda is final for that month, I guess, but, so you could get it on the agenda the next month. Let's say if your agenda's too long, then you put it on to another month. Or if you're, or, or if we have something that's addressing that in the coming months, then you could put it on to that month.
I mean, I would just like to see the sentence go, that's my, that's my.
Yeah.
Suggestion.
I, I'm fine either way.
Yeah, I don't care.
How do you feel, Michael? You okay with it?
I, I'm good with it, John.
Okay. So let's take it out.
Regular meeting agendas?
Isn't that the law?
Special meeting agendas?
Mm-hmm, that's the law.
Commending agendas? If we keep going.
I think that's all the law.
One, two, three.
I only have something for the consent agenda next, so.
That's where I was at.
Action items, good, quick, keep rolling, negotiation meeting notices.
Let's just move to consent.
Right on.
I think everything's law.
Yeah, I, I like the way it says this, the agenda is encouraged to give advance notice in a timely manner to the board chair or the superintendent. I, I agree with it.
So, is it generally, like, is it policy usually to encourage, like, is that a good way to write a policy, is to have an encouragement, or is that just like, it's, it's a nice idea? Cause it doesn't really seem like we're following it or we're not following it.
Well, I think they are following, because it, we're encouraged to give advance notice in a timely manner to the board chair or the superintendent when we want to pull something from the consent agenda.
Encouraged mean, to me, means not required.
Well.
It's not required.
It's not required at this time, it's encouraged.
Right.
And I think that's just, um, I think it's just proper etiquette to let them know that we want to pull something and give them a chance to know why, and, because the consent agenda is to expedite business at a board meeting.
But sometimes there's things in there that really shouldn't be in there, so I think that as a member, we have the opportunity and the right to remove something as needed, without telling anyone.
Yeah, so I'm fine to leave it in there, I just didn't, I just wasn't, it's unclear to me, but.
Well, I, I think, you know, if you want to change it, that's fine, I think encouraged means that it's just a nice thing to do to our administrators, to give them, uh, time to take a look at maybe questions you have, because it is the consent agenda. I think it's fine to pull it out, but I like the idea of it saying, um, give notice to either the board chair or the superintendent, so they, um, have a understanding that why you're going to do that, or that questions you may have. But, um, do you feel that you should take the word encouraged out, Hillary?
I'm okay with it, I just don't think it really means anything, it's just an, I'm fine leaving it in. My, the change that I have was, um, in the sentence, the remaining, um, it seems like if we cross out the remaining, then it's, and, and starts the sentence with items on the consent agenda, because it's, once we've pulled the item off the consent agenda, it's not there anymore. But if we don't pull something off, then it's, we don't need to worry about the remaining, so. So the whole policy is about the consent agenda, so can we just make it items on the consent agenda will be voted on?
Um, I think in this case, it makes sense to me that the remaining items versus the one that you pulled out will be voted on by a single motion, that's what we did tonight, we pulled something out and with a single motion, we voted on the rest of the consent agenda.
Right, so what's the policy if you don't, then it's still just the remaining items, if you don't pull anything off of it, then.
Oh, so you're saying the remaining items, I think this has to do.
I think if you just say items on the consent agenda, because when you pull something off, it's no longer on the consent agenda.
You're right, except I do believe that what they're saying is, when you pull something from the consent agenda, because it's encouraged, then the remaining items, it talks about the remaining items.
But if it's not required, it should even be in the policy, it just doesn't make sense. Like, why are we encouraging something that's not required?
Because I think it's nice etiquette, I think it just.
But it's a policy, it should be what's required, whatever you're doing in laws, it's not an encouragement policy.
We can make it required.
And I do agree with that, and I don't want to make it required.
And I don't want to make it required, as a board member, we have the right and opportunity to remove things from the consent agenda as needed.
I just think that you do have that right, but I think it is nice to say you're encouraged.
I'm not saying it's not nice, it's just not required from a board member.
You're right.
So if a board member wants to do it on their own time, by all means, feel free, but it's not required and it should not be in, in the policy. So I think it should be removed.
I would agree with that.
And then we just.
I, I think that it should be there, because.
And then you just change it to the items on the consent agenda, where you voted on by a single motion, and then you could add on whatever. You can change the rubbish.
I don't really see the big deal about it, but.
I, can I just ask, can I ask, put you on the spot, Mr. President?
Sure.
What do you think if we just pull things and don't encourage board members to, I'm just putting you on the spot?
I'm gonna have better answers if I know in advance.
Okay.
But.
So do you like the word encouraged, how do you feel about it?
I, I love when anyone encourages anyone to always be nice, but at the same time, I.
Thank you, the two words, be nice, I'm diplomatic, I'm sorry I put you on that, I'm sorry I put you on that.
I don't want to make mistakes on purpose either, so if there's something that we did wrong, or incorrectly, or there's a way we can explain it better, um, in no way are we trying to hide anything, otherwise we wouldn't put it on the agenda.
Let's, but, uh, Michael, what do you think? What do you, what do you want to do?
I would like to leave that language in there, I understand, I, I just, I don't think it should be encouraged to give a notice, but we're not required to, we don't have to, but, just remind everybody.
I, I agree with that.
And I agree with that.
So moving on to minutes, and this is where we get a little more options. I love that you guys are all saying, thank you.
Her TV cruise is loved.
Yeah.
Anything in the minutes before it gets to italicize.
Like, what's a reasonable amount of time?
Five minutes.
To have, to have the meeting minutes out to the public?
You have ten minutes to have your meeting, you have to start the thought.
Like, what do we have now, what's the policy now?
The next, the next day?
It's, then, then, it's a reasonable amount of time, so within the next day.
Yeah.
Does Idaho code have something to say about that, Jill?
Reasonable amount of time.
Is that all it says?
Yep. I can tell you that thirty days is generally not reasonable, forty-five days is generally not.
Before the next meeting?
But yes, the law itself does say reasonable.
I'm okay with the way you do it.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine.
Portia, if you scroll down to right here, where this is following, this is where we have to either accept it, or we can adjust, this is following the board clerk.
Is it by law, you have to have a designated clerk? Does someone have to be here if you can?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that is Idaho code, right?
Yes, okay.
But you can have, you can pick a clerk that's not paid, or whatever, like, we vote on that every year at the beginning of the year.
Do we vote on someone to take your place if you're not here?
So you can.
And you appoint the next person, the superintendent is the one who makes the decision.
You're talking about for the year, not for like, July?
Like, for July, I'm thinking about July.
I was saying, not in the next.
Yes.
Okay.
No, you don't have to, no, you don't have to make a decision of who's going to be here next month.
Okay, that's, thank you, that is what I, that's the way I read it.
We find this substitute.
No, we will pick it out of the people that stay for the meeting.
Thank you, that's so hard for me, I love it.
So, under the meeting conduct, sorry, um, in the italics, it says board members will not utilize electronic communication devices during board meetings, and I just think it should say for any district business, because, like, I have kids that are doing, traveling or something, and I want to be able to use my phone.
Are you guys, so, so we're, we're accepting that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
This is not, just.
Sorry, I moved on.
Otherwise that committee will get after me.
Wait, which one are we on? Under meeting conduct is where I'm at, is that, on four? Sorry, I moved on.
Do not utilize electronic communication devices during board meetings unless that committee.
So can we just say, like, specify, like, those for anything to do with the district, because I think, like, it's, I think we should, you know, I want to use my phone if I need to for my kids, so.
I think that you can just let people know I have my phone out because I'm waiting on my kids, versus people thinking you're texting someone in an audience or outside the board meeting, cause that is against the law. So you could specify I have my phone out to X, Y, Z.
And so if we just say that we aren't gonna use it for any district business, then.
Right, or texting during a live meeting, texting people information or stuff like that.
Like, we won't commu, well, we won't use it for any reason, except for personal reasons, however you want to specify that, but I think it should be outlined.
Yes.
Right now, it just says that we're not gonna use them.
And I, and that part really is to, um, more so to prevent, um, the board from texting each other, so that you're not having a secret meeting, so maybe something like that, that, you know, the board shall not use their cell phones to communicate with each other during a board meeting.
Yeah, that sounds great, yeah.
Reset one more time, a little slower.
Uh, the board will not use their cell phones or personal covers, so, so electronic communication devices during a board meeting, um, to communicate with each other.
Or other people in the audience, should we?
Fellow board.
Porter, you got that?
Fellow board members.
Yeah, fellow board members.
Or, yeah, I was gonna say patrons, does that need to, are people in the audience, because?
Yeah, I think we can still communicate with patrons if we wanted, but it would be part of the.
Public.
Public.
Yeah. I mean, unless you, yeah, unless you were having.
It's encouraged not to.
Right, yeah.
That's why I wondered, that's exactly what I wondered we should put in there.
There you go, you want to keep it.
But you can do it.
We accept that, we're all.
There you go.
There we go. Kelly, do you have any guys are good?
Gotcha.
Public. So never volunteer to do this for me.
I'm happy.
Public participation, there's a whole lot of italicize.
Well, isn't this all by law?
Is this the new law? So I was wondering.
Like, does the law specify three minutes?
Um, yeah, all of that stuff in is, in italics is, um, it's not specified in the law, it's just things that if you wanted to make sure that you, you know, you have decorum, you have people following rules, not yelling over each other, you know, those kinds of things.
Like, I kind of like what it says in our, um, current board rules about the three minutes, that it's three minutes, but like, if our board chair wants to give a little bit longer to someone, that they can.
Be very careful doing that, because you do that to one person, then you gotta do it to everybody.
I mean, I don't really think that you do, do you?
I, I didn't. I'd rather say one minute. This, I'm kidding.
I just want them to go on the public record.
I do like the three minutes, I think that gives people time, and, um.
People all today were really.
I thought it was really good, I thought it moved very, very nicely.
Three minutes is a lot of time to get a point across.
A lot of them didn't even use all their three minutes, so I like the idea of three minutes.
Yeah, we've only been on this policy for two, so.
Yeah. Thank you for reminding us.
So the next section, so we'll keep it at three minutes, the next, the yielded time will be pulled for a maximum of ten minutes for the designated speaker, like, if people are, like, wanting to talk about the same thing.
I've never seen that done.
Yeah, isn't this where it talks about that they can.
Yield their time to someone else.
To someone else, so it's three minutes plus.
So should it be nine minutes, because no one's getting one more second than three minutes, so that doesn't really add up.
Way to go, see your math, Hillary. Only to third or fourth grade, I can do that one.
Sixty-five minutes.
Well, not speaking, we can yield their three minutes to somebody else, so then they have six minutes.
And then they have.
I vote nine.
Up to nine minutes.
Nine minutes, which it makes sense to.
Okay, that makes sense.
Nine minutes is good. Five minutes.
And then in the event that twenty or more speakers express a desire to speak on any given agenda item, the board chair may reduce each individual's time limit or set a maximum available for all speakers.
Do you want it to be twenty?
Yikes, do we want to say ten or?
Ten, or seven?
You're getting like, I, I. I like ten.
I think ten.
I like ten.
Twenty is a little much.
Twenty's a lot.
We had.
We had about, let's see, we had ten minutes.
But it's all on the same topic.
Yeah, just the same topic.
We only, yeah, I think, I think ten, we only had six tonight.
It's not enough, and unless there's another.
And they were mostly different topics.
They were.
It did happen, but they combined.
Yeah.
Keep going, you guys are good with the rest, that can be a public guidelines.
And I liked the other part, the board chair can terminate.
Yeah, I was fine with all the rest of it.
I liked it.
Yeah, I was good with that.
I make a motion that we approve policy tick two sixty-two point one with the corrections.
Do we have a second?
A second.
The first reading. The first reading.
And as we clean this up, if there's things that look, you obviously get to see, but for a second, we will know anything that, like, hey, we might have missed this one, so we clean this up.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, Kirsty.
Aye.
Michael. JD.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. No, we're on the good authority, really going right on, aren't you, like? I do have something to add to the good of the order, these were given to us thank yous for service to our schools, since this is Idaho School Board Month, and they were, um, brought to us by Kinnametal School, so thank you for those people who signed those cards. And also, we have some board webinars, and June twelfth, which is coming up tomorrow, we have a Leadership Institute in West Ada at the Sawtooth Board Memorial, and, and, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye, so move.
And second, and.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye for me. And that is the end.